Are we good to get started? Michelle? Good to go? Okay, we'll call now call to order the Thursday, June 8th, 2023 Reno City Planning Commission Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Villanueva, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Draculich?
Here.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Present.
Commissioner Gower? He's going to be late. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz will not be in attendance. Commissioner Villanueva?
Here.
Chairman Velto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We'll now move to public comment and open up public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or any general public comment. It appears we have one request to speak form. Will Alex Barajas please come up? Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Can I start now? All right. My name is Alex Elizar. I attend Hug High School. I have concerns over the housing expenses in Reno, Nevada, and I have and how they have increased since the pandemic so began. So to begin, everyone loves to come home to a nice warm bed and wake up and get food from their fridge whenever they please. After a long day, you may want to brush your teeth, change into some comfortable clothes. It's the normal day to day-to-day action most people will take in their comfortable homes. But have you ever thought, how long did it take for someone to afford that home? How are people maintaining their homes in Reno when prices have skyrocketed? Imagine someone you know, such as a friend, who's trying to move out, or perhaps a family member who wishes to relocate. Back when the biggest little city headed a smaller population, this was not a stressful matter. Post-pandemic, however, this may be too stressful for some due to how expensive housing has gotten, how Reno is no longer affordable as it once was. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Thomas Barajas.
Hello, my name is Thomas, and I'm from Hug High School. And today I'm going to be speaking about global health issues and hold on one second, sorry about that. And in today's interconnected world, global health issues are a growing concern that affects millions of people worldwide, from infectious diseases to chronic health conditions. This issue posed significant challenges to health and well-being individuals and communities across the globe, as such as its essentials, understand roots, causes, and these challenges of works together to develop solutions that can help us address them. From the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic to the rise of antibiotic resistance, bacteria, global health issues are a major concern for individuals, government, and organizations worldwide.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming out and giving comments tonight during public comment. Really appreciate it. Do we have any other requests to speak forms for general public comment?
There are no other requests to speak forms, and we don't have any voicemails, and nobody is on Zoom wishing to speak.
Right, thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak during general public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Chair Velto, before, I do have a couple of questions. I, can you remind me if the videos are incorporated into the minutes, like the, this is for the new Nathan? Can you remind me, are the video recordings, everything incorporated into the minutes? I can't remember.
Sorry, what do you mean by the minutes?
Just the minutes. Do we incorporate, so for example, if they're ever used on the record in court proceedings or anything like that, can they be?
They are recorded, yes.
Okay, so they can be, they are included with the minutes? Okay, and then our presentation is also included with the minutes when they're posted on the website?
I don't know that. Michelle, do you know?
Hi, so the presentations and any public comment that is made during a planning commission meeting are attached to the agenda system at the end of the meeting or the next day, so they are available for public com, or for the public to review, and they are part of the public record. The, any videos that are shown are on our recording, but there's no way to attach an actual video to our system.
Oh, no, no, that's totally fine. I just didn't know. Okay, thank you. And I'm happy to motion to approve.
Perhaps the city attorney's office could weigh in just to get a complete answer to your question?
Sure.
I think the question was if the video was incorporated into the minutes.
I know it's available on our website, so I don't know if it's actually incorporated, but I'm assuming that it is, and it's always available on the website, so you can watch all the meetings and the attachments.
Okay, the reason I ask is I never know if I should say that every time we vote, if I should say, request to have them incorporated, or if it's automatic, so, and you're telling me it is automatic.
It is automatic.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Please do. We've a motion, do we have a second?
Christian Garrow, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, I will be abstaining as I was not present.
Commissioner Velto, I'll be abstaining as well, which makes the motion carry four to zero, four to zero to two. And we'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is public hearings. We'll start with Agenda Item 5.1, case number LDC 23-00057, Comstock cottages, Phase Two Time Extension. John, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. John Kromplodick, representing the applicant, Rob Fitzgerald. All of you know Rob Fitzgerald. We're graciously requesting your support for this time extension. I'll quickly go through a couple of slides. Some of you would remember back in 2019, here's the vicinity map, Phase Two and Phase One, and then the UP railroad crossing is the key element here. It's really the basis of this request, going back to 2018 on Comstock One, 2019 on Comstock Two, both joined at the hip as it relates to meeting this condition of approval. I think it's important to share with the commission who weren't here, a reminder to the rest of you that were, and the public. There is Phase One and Phase Two in a little bit more detail, the footprints of each project. Again, I want to draw your attention to Comstock Drive. So you see that leg of road between the project entry and down to Virginia Street. We spent a lot of time at this with the community. Mr. Fitzgerald and I hosted a neighborhood meeting up there, NABS, PC, and this condition number nine in the next slide involves a lot going on in that leg of Comstock Drive. And if you look in the left margin, here's what we agreed to and trying to get accomplished in recording a map and building the project. Nine A, the bike line northbound, the Sharo southbound, and B widened to a collector's street standard, that entire stretch, the sidewalk depends the width, four to eight feet for the entire stretch, and there's a pinch point underneath the McCarran underpass, that's why it's variable in width. And then we also agreed to, remember, we had RTC show up at the hearing, and there was these right turn lane, northbound on Virginia Street was a capacity-related improvement that helps out operationally. We're here to try and do this. We want to do it. Mr. Fitzgerald could speak to it if you wish. That's all I have, commissioners. Thank you for your time here for any questions.
Yes, thank you, Plank Commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. I have a very brief presentation also, as was noted, this is a request for an extension of time, and I'll go over this really quick. As we look at the site, just so you have an idea where the site is, this would be the intersection of Dandini and 395, the intersection of McCarron and Virginia. So it's that hillside that sits just above Virginia there. We have kind of an access coming off the north end, an existing neighborhood of the university neighborhood up above there, hills, and then this particular project, which it came through in two phases. This is, it is for an extension of time. It's 196 dwelling units was originally approved by the tentative back in 2009. So just to note with that, with this extension of time, that you cannot modify the conditions, it is just that extension of time that comes through Nevada Revised Statute 278360 that allows four years to record a final map and then does allow of coming forward before this body and additional two years to get that through, as was detailed by the applicant's representative. They are working with the railroad. Those communications can become challenging, and to give them more time, staff is supportive of that. Should be noted, too, Phase One of this project, which is the lower portion that connects to Comstock, that time extension was approved back in 2022. And looking at the project, 196, that Phase One being that bottom portion, I'll leave you with this. I was the original planner on this and did work with those conditions on making sure that those traffic conditions were met and those other conditions with our engineering team. And so, once again, staff is supportive of this time extension from that, for them to allow them the time to work through those issues. Thank you. I'll leave you with the recommended motion, available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to the commission for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Draculich, no disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, I spoke with the applicant's representative. We'll now open up public comments. Do we have any requests to speak forms?
We did not receive any correspondence, voicemails, or requests to speak forms, and do not have anybody via Zoom that would like to speak.
Okay. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Okay. And then the two requests to speak forms you just received, are those for general public comment?
Yes. Well, no, there are ones for general public comment.
Okay.
What, two for general, one for future extension?
Okay. Is, I have a question for city attorneys. Is there, is there an avenue to reopen general public comment?
If you want to reopen general comment, you can do that.
Okay.
And then you might want to wait till after this item and then allow that.
Perfect, thank you so much. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment on this item and come back to the commission for questions or questions of the applicant. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John? Brief question. I understand the, I understand the request, I understand that the issue's dealing with the railroad. I guess my question is actually one of the rest of the development. Has the, you know, obviously, this is an area that you're responding to that's not contiguous with the rest of the development. Has the, in the interim time, has there been work continuing on the final map process and all of those items separate from the issues with the railroad crossing?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all, so essentially?
It's all going forward, and including, I didn't mention, but there is, what I'm understanding is good faith between the railroad and the applicant. It's progressing.
Okay.
There's just no statutory requirement to, you get it.
Understood, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was, never say. Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Hi, John.
Yes.
While you're up here. The, so I was here for the presentation on one of the lots. I don't recall, I would, you know, I didn't look back at those minutes. I don't recall if we had similar, similar situation with cuts and fills. So it looks like grading resulting in cuts greater than 20 and then fills greater than 10 on this site. Was that similar to the other?
It was similar, same kind of topographic region, right? Phase One, Phase Two, very similar in topography.
Okay, because I believe I approved that one.
I believe you made the motion.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Or motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
In the, in this case number, LDC 23-00057, based upon compliance with NRS 278360, I move to approve a two-year time extension on the Comstock cottages, Phase Two tentative map, subject to the original conditions of approval.
You motion a second? Is there a second?
Commissioner Draculich, a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good luck. Okay, before moving on to Agenda Item 5.2, I'm going to reopen public comment, and we have a public comment from Daniel Davis.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Daniel Davis. I'm from Proctor, Hug, Proctor R. Hug High School, and I would like to talk about wage inequality today. I believe that there needs to be more awareness on the issue of it, as it has an impact on all of our community. We need to recognize that wage inequality is not just an economic issue, but also a social justice issue that affects people from all backgrounds and walks of life. The gap between different social classes keeps increasing and it won't stop unless something is done. Secondly, we need to address the root causes of wage inequality. This includes factors such as discrimination based on gender, race, and ethnicity. As the child of a single African-American mother, also Asian, forgot to put that, I felt its effects firsthand. It's extremely difficult to provide for yourself when you're a caregiver and you have a child and rent keeps rising. Sorry, I'm not really, really good with public speaking. Along with this, we need to look at the impact of globalization and automation on the labor market. Machines are rapidly being integrated into the workforce, so what are people meant to do if a machine takes their job? We need to take steps towards a more inclusive and diverse workforce and ensure that all individuals have access to education and training that will enable them to succeed in the new economy. Thirdly, we need to take concrete steps to reduce wage inequality. This can include increasing the minimum wage for our city here, implementing progressive taxation policies, and providing tax incentives to companies that promote pay inequity. What we need is to ensure that our policies and initiatives are backed by strong political will and public support. The people need your support, chair members. We need leadership and collaboration across all sectors of society, including business, labor, government, and civil society. And yeah, I, yeah, that's all I have. I'm sorry. I don't know how to really end this, do I? Yeah, that's, that's really all I have. Thank you, chair members.
Thank you. You did an excellent job. Thank you for coming and speaking to us. Since we've opened public comment, does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak during general public comments? Seeing none and having no other request to speak forms, we'll close public comments and move to Agenda Item 5.2, case number LDC 23-00056, Carville Park Senior Apartments SPD. Presentation tonight?
Pat Bernacki, Development Partner of the Applicant Northern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Council. We're here to talk about Carville Park Senior Apartments. I'll give you some context, but at the beginning, it's important to think of this as a preservation of affordable housing. That's the intent, that's the motivation, and I'll explain some of the uniqueness as to why we're here. But Carville Park was built in 1979 by the Building Trades. It's been owned and operated as a nonprofit with its mission of being elderly preference affordable housing. It was built as 52 four-bedroom apartments, and I'll show you on the next slide. Floor plan's very similar to what you might see in a college dorm. There's a common area kitchen and living room, and then four separate, four separate beds. But as we have noted here, there's 11 two-story buildings plus a office community center. There's 134 parking spaces, 15 that are accessible, and the resident criteria is there. There hasn't been any extensive renovations, so the impetus of this is that the property's had a lot of deferred maintenance. It's in need of a renovation. It'll go through a tax credit renovation in addition to a HUD extension of a subsidy, which I'll get into. But the uniqueness here is, as you'll see on the next slide, this is the existing floor plan. So the property has a 208-unit HUD HAP contract, and HAP stands for Housing Assistance Payment. Back in the 70s and 80s, HUD gave out loans to nonprofits called the 202 program. With it came a HAP contract, and so all of the residents at Carville Park and historically have always enjoyed from this subsidy. As we got through COVID, HUD had some, at a national level, some deeper investigations in some of their properties, and thought that these common area setups weren't terribly healthy, especially in elderly senior. The property is up for renewal of that HAP contract through HUD. It'll happen this fall, and it was a perfect timing to go through the tax credit process, recapitalize the property, go through extensive renovations, and HUD's only comment was, could you really turn those into four individual studios and illuminate the common kitchen and give each resident their own kitchen? It's important to note, there's 208 leases. So as you can see, ingress and egress is to each individual unit, and then they have another door that gets to a kitchen. So each resident uses their own front door to get in and out. It's kind of a very unique floor plan, and each resident is 208, each has, resident has their own lease. In most cases, you'll get four strangers that live in a, in a quad, so to speak. So with that, we went to the city and we said, hey, we're going to do this really extensive renovation. There's 208 leases, there's 208 people, it's still going to be 208, it's still going to be, and obviously, 52 four-bedrooms isn't the same as 208 studios. And so we're here, and with the assistance of staff, and the city's been great, it was that you needed to do an SPD, and it needs to be an SPD for 208 studios, because we'll be adding a kitchen, and that changes kind of the definition of a dwelling unit. So with that, here's some renderings of what we're looking at, what'll happen and its future use. So it goes from 52 four-bedrooms to 208 apartment units. The buildings will still be the same from the outside. You won't be able to, there's no additions, there's no extensions, there will be cosmetic upgrades, as you can see here. Parking spaces will remain the same. We did a traffic study, but it's kind of moot. There's no additional parking or traffic that would happen. Accessibility will be, remain the same. The great part is, we keep the affordability. The residents see no change. We will continue to serve an elderly preference. HUD will effectively subsidize the additional costs in rent, so the residents don't see any change. We maintain our affordability, and the upgrades to the units, super critical. So with this, there'll come fire suppression that'll be in all of the units, doesn't exist now. Hardwired fire alarms doesn't exist now. The first four units all have a step that doesn't meet HUD's requirement for ADA accessibility. We'll be able to address that with the renovation. We'll have 50% of the units that are ADA accessible, which is five times what the requirement is with HUD. Additional landscape upgrades, we'll modernize some of the amenities. But the real kicker would be a floor plan that's a little similar to this, and this is conceptual right now, but as you can see, the doors all remain the same, it's just the addition to, of a kitchen in each, each unit, and we changed the bathrooms a little bit, but each resident has, has their own space, their own studio. And with that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, do we have any, because we do have a presentation.
There we go. All right, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record, bringing to you tonight, LDC 2356, the Carville Park Senior Apartments SPD. So the project site, just to give you a frame of reference, is located just east of the Reno Sparks Livestock Event Center and the Washoe County Complex. It's highlighted there in yellow, just off of Sutro and Carville. It's 4.53 acres, spread over two parcels. The second parcel you can see is just kind of a sliver across Arnold. Effectively, it's just landscaping. There are 11 buildings, as the applicant indicated, with 52 dorm-style units, 10 residential buildings, and a leasing and office recreation building. The request is a zoning map amendment from MF14 to SPD, and no additional uses or buildings are proposed. So the key issues, zoning and development standards compatibility and conformance with the master plan. Just to bring you in a little bit closer here, I wanted to point out that the surrounding land uses are primarily duplexes to the south, west, and east. There's also a vacant parcel to the west, and then to the north across Carville, there are duplexes apartments and single-family residences. Here's the current zoning of MF14 and the proposed change to the SPD. The master plan is mixed neighborhood, and on the screen are five principal goals, policies that, that the project conforms with. So the applicant did a great job of presenting the background and just a little bit more information, as he said that there are 52 dorm-style, and that's the key phrase, dorm-style apartments that function effectively as 208 individual units, but they are not technically dwelling units because they don't have their own kitchens. They are proposing to replace those 52 shared kitchens with a private kitchen amounting to the 208 individual units. I did also want to point out at this point in time that these modifications technically increase the dwelling unit density beyond the standard density allowed in MF14 zone. However, in practice, there is effectively no change in density, as each of the 208 rooms is currently leased to an individual household. This will not change with the new 208 individual dwelling units with their own kitchens. The development standards, you can see side by side, effectively, the only thing that is happening is the density is changing, the base zoning of MF14 is being carried through on everything else other than the density. The SPD handbook that the applicant prepared provides assurance that future renovation and redevelopment of the site will be nearly identical to what exists currently. It provides for little flexibility in the design and development standards. Essentially, again, the property will function no differently than it has, and will continue to serve 208 low-income households with preference for seniors. And the location of existing buildings, sidewalks, and parking lots and service areas will remain unchanged. Here are the recommended findings. Staff can make all findings. There's the analysis on the screen. And here's the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. We'll come back to the commission for disclosures and start with Commissioner Gower.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, no disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures, and we'll now open up public comments. Do we have any requests to speak forms?
We did not receive any correspondence, voicemails, or requests to speak forms, and do not have anyone via Zoom that would like to speak.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and come back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the applicant. First of all, like the project, like the thing there, I guess the question I have, and it's maybe not so much one for our findings, but just one in general, if you have 208 currently occupied uses, is there a plan in place for the temporary relocation as you're remodeling?
I got the same question two days ago.
I figured you might have.
Yeah, so HUD has pretty strict rules on how you do renovations of deferred maintenance buildings. The biggest one is that the developer owner can't keep a resident temporarily displaced for more than 11 months. A lot of various bad things happen, and so HUD monitors our entire renovation and our relocation. So yes, we're not going to keep residents in the building. It'll be a phased redevelopment. Right now, it's looking like we'll take two to three buildings at a time. The residents will go to, hopefully, if we can, if we can coordinate it the right way, one location. The unit that they go to temporarily has to be at the level that they were at, and the landlord takes all of the costs. So the moving costs, the relocate, you know, moving your cable contract, the resident pays no additional rent, they continue to pay their rent, and then they're relocated back at the landlord's cost, so part of the development. There's a third party, we will use a national HUD-certified temporary. use a national HUD-certified temporary relocation company that is very experienced in seniors specifically, but all of those costs are, are run through the development, and HUD monitors on a monthly basis that relocation.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that breakdown. That was basically related to the one public comment that we got in our explanation.
Yeah, yeah. We've met with the residents, and yeah, it's, it's a lot of education, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Hi. Currently, how many occupants are per bed, are there per bedroom, and how many?
One.
Okay, so it, would it be capped at one?
Yep.
With this cha, okay, so they wouldn't be able to have like a spouse or a partner, caretaker?
The elderly preference limits it to one. We will also go through the Longcom Housing Tax Credit Program to fund this renovation, and so there will be a law on place, in place on the property. That's a land use restriction agreement.
Oh, okay.
That'll be specific to a senior preference, which will also limit it to one resident in a unit.
Okay. Okay, so really, nothing does change that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Thank you. Scroll back in case of LDC 23-00056. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. I can make all the findings, and I do want to thank staff for working on this relatively unique solution for this situation. So appreciate that.
Great. We have a motion, and I'll just second that. This is a great project. I appreciate you bringing this forward. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Villanueva, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll now open up case number, item number five, which is case number LDC 23-00058, 1565 Plumas Street Town Homes.
Good evening. Gabe Whitler, Odyssey Engineering, presenting 1565 Plumas Street Town Homes. This is a tenant map application for 17 units of single-family attached product. This is a conceptual site plan here with showing the, the building configurations. You'll see there's six buildings with multiple units in, in each building. The designated map on the left, the site is at the southwest corner of Mount Rose and Plumas. There's an overlay here on the right side that shows the site plan overlaid on a relatively current aerial photo, again, giving you some context of how the, how the project fits into the neighborhood. The project parcel is just shy of, of one acre. It's highlighted here on the master plan. The designation is mixed neighborhood. For this area, that's the orange. You'll see that to the north and west, there's some mixed-use designations, and then as you get farther east and south, it switches to single-family. It's kind of a key element that we have commercial uses to the north, and then it transitions into a, a single-family to the south. So as an infill project, this is kind of, you know, maybe a, a target density to, to transition from commercial to, to standard, single-family residential with a little higher density. This is the zoning designation. It's currently zoned MF14 multifamily. You'll see the properties to the south and, and the east are, are, have the same designation as well, with the professional office to the north and some neighborhood commercial to the west. The uses to the north and west are currently commercial. You'll find some appear to be older residential style, but they've been converted to commercial uses. And then, interestingly enough, the properties to the south, several of them, you'll see have multiple addresses, although they also appear to be, you know, a single-family style property. But given the fact they have multiple addresses, it appears they're being used as a multi-tenant type. So this is kind of a good infill fit for switching from commercial into the typical single-family with a, with a multifamily style density product. These are just some excerpts from, from code, just to give you some reference. I tried to make this point to the NAV, and they took it that I was maybe annoyed by the public hearing process. All I was trying to say is that we're, we're here to request a tentative map for 17 units so that these can be for-sale units. The same product in this zoning could come forward as multifamily and go straight to building permit. That's, that's all I was trying to relay there. So we're here to request a tentative map for 17 units. It does sound odd when you have one acre parcel with 17 units on it, and you're in an MF14 zoning, but that's because code already allows for a, a density bonus. Density increases are allowed projects with small unit sizes, multifamily districts as follows, and so we fall under B2 here. We're just shy of 1,400 square feet, average unit size, so code affords a 30% density increase. So that's how we, we get to 17. We're requesting a zone change or a zoning density increase. It's just a, a straight code allotment that's already in place. I'd like to point out the purpose of the MF14 district. It's intended to accommodate single-family residential development and low-density multifamily residential development, such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, and multifamily buildings. So I think that, that we fit quite nicely into, to the intent of the master plan and, and the zoning designation for this, this infill project. On the right's the, the current master plan designation of mixed neighborhood. Again, just pointing out that these type of duplexes, smaller lots are what are, is really intended in this area for the, for the master plan designation. This is overall site plan. You see the site in the middle there. It'll have a, a common driveway down the middle with a hammerhead-style turnaround on the west end to accommodate for fire and typical vehicle maneuvering, function similar to a cul-de-sac. The total site, again, is just under an acre. 38% is building footprint. The, the 23,719 square feet of livable area, that's where you get your average unit size at 1,395 square feet when, when you divide that by 17. There is a, a Plumas Neighborhood Residential Core Planning Area overlay, and one of the key elements of that is that it limits you to 25-foot height and two-story max. So that'll be part of the final architecture of the, of the building, which, by the way, is still in progress. I, I don't have any elevations to present tonight, but that is in the works. Site amenity and landscape area is about a quarter of the site, and then another third is site improvements for access driveways, that sort of thing. So at, at the bottom here, you see a density kind of spells out the, the way you calculate MF14 is you take the lot area and divide it by 3,000. It's one unit per 3,000 square feet. You have your typical 14 units, but with the 30% bonus allowed in code, that puts you at 18.7 units, and, and we're proposing 17. This is a, a landscape rendering, just kind of depict how, how it'll look within the neighborhood. You'll see the, the scale of the, the footprints with the multi-units. Excuse me, instead, as opposed to going with one large multifamily building or cramming all the units into one building by breaking it up into these smaller units attached in pods of, of buildings. That way, the massing of the exterior appearance of the structural should fit, fit nicely with the surrounding neighborhood. Again, the properties to the north are, are commercially used currently, as well as to the west. The single-family appearing units to the south, those are the ones I was referring to. Some of them are, are used as, as a kind of a multifamily type, type unit. You'll see the parking summary on the right. I like to point this out. These are based on code requirements, so if you add it, it's, and, and for this type of unit, it's based on a square footage calculation. So you, there are 29 spaces required, and there are 36 available. That accounts garages. We have, on the west side, we have some guest parking areas. And then you'll notice there's three spaces allotted for on-street parking. Currently, Plumas has on-street parking on both sides. It's, you know, it's right at the kind of minimum threshold we'd use for a, a parking both sides standard. RTC's, that really, their only comment was that they will be planning some multimodal improvements on Plumas at some point in the future, and that with that, that parking will most likely disappear. And so they just want to make sure that we weren't relying on that on-street parking as part of our, our site to function. So code-wise, we're about 25% overparked. When you remove those three on-street stalls, we will still be overparked by about four stalls. So I know that, to date, there's been some comment about, concern about parking. The nice thing about a for-sale type product in this scenario is that when you buy one of these units through CCNRs and restrictions, you're fully aware that you're buying an X-size unit with a two-car garage, and that you, you have to park in the garage, and you don't have additional parking on-site. So I think that, that will lend towards less conflict, maybe, with, with onsite parking if that, it comes to fruition. This is the site as it lays out. This is similar to what you'll see on the plat for the, the final map. If the tenant map's approved, we'll move into the final map stages so we can plat these units. You'll get, the footprint of the building will be mapped as a zero lot line, and then each unit gets what we call a limited common element. So they'll have their own yard. It'll feel like their own space. But there will be utilities and that sort of thing, drainage that's common to the, to the development. So there will be maintenance access to those areas for common maintenance, that sort of thing. This is an overall aerial of the predeveloped project. The current owner has pulled a demolition permit and has cleaned up the site. I'd like to point out, there were six residential-style buildings on the property with nine addresses, according to the assessors. So I really can't tell you how many people are living in there, but as far as, as traffic is concerned, I know people who are always sensitive to this, but the, the increase in traffic going from six buildings with nine-plus units inside to 17 smaller-type units, I think the layperson will, will not be able to even notice that. As far as traffic counts are concerned, when you're in an infill situation like this on a, in a busy neighborhood, I mean, there is definitely traffic in the area, but 17 units in, in traffic terms is, is relatively insignificant. The threshold, I think there was some confusion about the traffic counts. This project would trigger 17 peak hour trips. Somebody maybe confused that with daily trips. Peak hour is what we use to, to determine thresholds for, do we need a full-blown traffic study for a site of this nature? And that's usually 100 trips, peak hour trips. It triggers a full-blown traffic study, and we're, we're at 17. You know, there, there's a condition from engineering for us to do a, a design exception request. Very frequently, when you do an infill, or you're working in an older neighborhood, there's driveways and access points staggered that, that are existing and don't meet current design standards. So we'll give a technical summary on how all that functions as part of the final map and, and permit process. The nice thing about having a signal adjacent to the site at Mount Rose and Plumas is that, you know, that does create some brakes in, in the traffic patterns to, to assist with, with turning movements. We weren't able to keep the, the junkyard in the current site configuration, so unfortunately, that won't, won't be around anymore. But that's, that's the gist of the, of the project, and I'd love to field any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Do we have to leave a presentation?
All right. Again, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record. Again, tonight, bringing you LDC 2358, the 1565 Plumas Town Homes, Plumas Street Town Homes Project. The project site is just under an acre, 0.99 acres. Frame of reference is, the applicant indicated is the south, effectively the southwest corner of Mount Rose and Plumas, a few blocks east of Arlington. The site is currently vacant. There were six residential structures, as the applicant indicated, and several outbuildings, but those have all been removed recently during the course of the last few months as we've been going through the process. The request is a tentative map for 17 single-family, a 17-lot, single-family attached townhomes and associated common areas. Key issues are site design and compatibility with surrounding land uses. As we've zoomed in here, I do want to point out, the applicant did as well, that the parcels to the north are all offices. To the west, you have a commercial, including a coffee bar, and I think it's Wild Onion Pizza Place. To the south, you have a duplex and some single-family residences. And to the east, across Plumas, you have a single-family residence. The zoning is MF14, and there is the Plumas Neighborhood Residential Core Planning Area overlay that has a couple of, of requirements that the applicant indicated, and I will touch on those in a minute as well. Here's the master plan land use, mixed neighborhood, a handful of policies and goals and whatnot that the project lines up with. So as far as site design goes, there is a 30% density bonus that is allowed for an average size less than 1,400 square feet. That would allow 18 units to be built, as the applicant has told you. They are proposing 17 two-story townhomes in two, three, and four-unit buildings. Those units range from approximately 1,209 square feet to 1,515 square feet and include one or two-car garages. And I did want to point out that under Condition 11, the garages are required to be used for parking. I suppose if they don't have cars, they could do put other things in there, but the parking must happen in garages as opposed to the guest parking spaces and effectively the street spaces. So as far as site design, the project exceeds the minimum landscape area with landscaping and common elements. It is a private driveway with a hammerhead turnaround. Reno Fire has reviewed this and tentatively blessed it as design. They did ask for signage with regard to the striped area adjacent to the accessible space at the south side of that hammerhead. They wanted a signage there for no parking in that striped area, so that's part of Condition 10. They also wanted signage on the trash enclosure that you can see on the western property line to require that that, the gates on that be closed at all times so that it wouldn't block access there. So that's also part of Condition 10. And then there's a third element in Condition 10 requiring that the guest parking spaces are just that, guest parking. Did also want to point out that there is a six-foot sidewalk extension that is being proposed along the eastern frontage of the site on Plumas that connects to an existing sidewalk just to the north there. And then that effectively wraps around to the west on Mount Rose Street to the commercial area to the west. So that's a nice element with the increased connectivity in the neighborhood. Compatibility with surrounding land uses, these townhomes, staff feels that they provide an appropriate transition from the offices that are to the north of the site to the residential uses to the south of the site. And it is, has been indicated there will be a negligible traffic impact with those peak hour trips. All parking is, all required parking is on-site, and staff included Condition Number 7 for allowable days and hours of construction to help minimize impacts on the adjacent residential uses. Here are the recommended findings for the tentative map. Staff can make all the recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We'll come back to the commission for
We'll come back to the Commission for Disclosures. Start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I'm very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, I read emails and I live two blocks south of that site.
Commissioner Draculich, I've visited the site and read and received emails.
Commissioner Armstrong, I read and received emails. I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Gower, same disclosure.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures. We'll now open up public comments and we'll do public comments specific to this item. We have one, I have one request to speak for Kelly Jesuit.
I'm short. Good afternoon. I am a resident in Ward 1. I live about two blocks directly to the east of this particular development. I've lived there since 1981. I have seen the increase of density in our neighborhood. There's nothing I can do about that. I realize that this is probably a done deal. Feels a little bit like Don Quixote today. But anyway, I have difficulty at this point getting out of my neighborhood. I exit down Ardmore to go west or north, or Glen Manor, depending on the time of day, depends on which street I can get out of. At this point, my best option has been to go to Lakeside and go around. But then, of course, we've had construction there, so I felt relatively blocked into my neighborhood lately. So to hear that this is 17 units coming straight out with one exit out of that one-acre lot at Ardmore directly feels like it's another gate in my neighborhood. So it's frustrating. I'm hoping that there is a traffic study. It's only a few yards to Mount Rose and Plumas. And if you've had the pleasure lately of trying to go north or south at that intersection, it's a headache. And I can see, they said 17 exits, morning and afternoon. Well, I don't see that as realistic. I think that there's, it's going to be difficult with one entrance and 17 units. I'd hope that you'd reduce it to 14. I realize that's the only request I can make at this point. When it was six units, I've lived there again 43 years, I rarely saw a vehicle come in or out of that area. Once in a while, there was a truck. Usually it was a pretty quiet, six houses. So I would say there is going to be a big increase in traffic. So I'd hope that maybe that's looked at before these units go in. Again, with one exit and all of those cars coming out of there, we have no, we're just increasing it significantly. We have had another unit going in at Forest Street. We had all of the units go in along Mount Rose Street, all beautifully done. And I think they've enhanced the neighborhood, but they increased traffic. They put parking along Mount Rose, so when I exit to the north out of Watt Street onto Mount Rose, I can't see. And it has been some several near misses. So parking along Plumas, I'm, I'm, really? So I appreciate your time. I hope your consideration. Please come visit our neighborhood. And I would suggest about 4:30 would be a place that you can come and see what it's like now. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Request to speak for him from Derek Cromer.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I live directly across the street, so I'm directly impacted. I live at 1,600 Plumas Street. So as was just stated, in the prior years, we had very little problem with the six buildings across the street. There wasn't that much traffic. To put 17 buildings or 17 structures in there with two cars per 17, that's 34. Now, if I make a mistake with the single car, so if I take it down to 28, that's still a lot of cars. Places to park along the street are, at this point, not very good. The traffic there, if, as she suggested, you come down during the primal hours are backed up from Plum Lane to Mount Rose. And I know that because I look out and see it every day. So I'm not speaking out, out of turn. I am beside myself where someone can put 17 units on one acre. I realize that there'll be two-story. And as she said, I may be spitting into the wind, but it does seem a little exorbitant for that area. I can see 10 units because that would consist of dual units per five sections. And if you look straight across, which I've walked that distance many times going up to the coffee shop, it's, it's about five duplexes wide if you walk, in my estimation. And I'm not a planner and I don't plan to be. So I'm not saying anyone's wrong. I just disagree with the numbers. I can understand wanting to put property in there and profit by that. I understand that, and I'm not against that. I'm just against the large number because I think that's wrong for the community. I do realize there are some businesses in the area, but for the greater part of that local area, it is residential. And I am one of the only two on my street to could turn my area into a multi-unit, which I will not in the future. I have no idea what happens with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other requests to speak for us?
We did receive correspondence, which was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record. We don't have any voicemails. We don't have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak.
Would anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? I have your, I have your request to speak forms, and I'm going to invite you up after this item to speak when I reopen general public comment. Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Oh, no, you can speak. Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. I'm Candy Borrego. My daughter and I purchased the lot just to the bottom right of that floor plan. We're right next door. It's a single-family home. The intention is, it's kind of half demolished right now. We're working on plans to build my daughter a new home to live there. 17 units there seems like a lot. We have two concerns. One is parking on the street and being right next door with two- and three-bedroom units. We know there will be more people than just two-car garages and the parking, there will be parking in front of our house every day, we're sure of it. And then the other concern is, the reason we purchased that house in that neighborhood, and it was before the, the current owners bought the parcel, and I'm sure the property, the, the development will be beautiful for an infill project, but there's no elevations or anything added with this. And part of the reason is the cute community and the, the little cottage houses that we bought, the house that we bought in that little neighborhood. But without elevations, it's hard to know that that property will, I mean, it's going to be a multifamily unit, but will it look like the rest of the homes in that community? So those are our two concerns. Also, pulling out of our property, those three parking units that are guest parking is going to make it really difficult to get out onto Plumas. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If you could please fill out a request to speak form. Thank you for, thank you. What else? Anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Saying none will close public comment. Back to the Commission for Questions. Mr. Draculich.
Thank you, Chair. Question for Jeff, please. Jeff, I live not too far from there, maybe a quarter mile. I travel that street almost every day. First thing that kind of jumps out, so I understand the 17 vehicles at peak hours, I kind of get that, and it's kind of negligible, like you guys noted. The one thing that jumps out is if we're going northbound on Plumas, the left turn in is going to get a little nasty and hold up traffic. Did you guys have a conversation about that or what was your thought process around that specifically?
So I specifically have not had a conversation about that.
Mike here?
No. Okay. The engineering manager was going to be here and be able to address some of those issues. But a full engineering analysis was done and, and it was not deemed to have been a concern. So I wish I had more specific information, but I relied on the engineer on that and, and it was not deemed to have been a concern.
Okay. It's not alarming enough for me to not support this project, but it's, it's serious. I've done that road many times and I know it's going to stop some traffic. Left turnout as well will probably be a little tough, but that's going to be more on the occupants than anything. I was more thinking about that northbound traffic being held up. So just a thought, just wanted to hear what you got to discuss.
Mike, could you go, go ahead and try speaking?
If you guys want, while we're trying to track down Mike, we can move on and go to some other questions and when he chimes back in, I can, no problem with that.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Thank you, Chair. This was also for Jeff, so I actually had a couple questions. So I noticed that there's like six residential buildings as part of the existing site and it looked like a junkyard. So I was curious, how long has it been zoned to MF14? Was that part of the last master plan?
No, no. I'm glad you asked that question. No, it, it goes back at least to the mid-'90s, but probably back even further. In fact, I printed out some pages from the 1995 Plumas Neighborhood Plan that show that it was MF14 all the way back then.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get an idea of how long it's had that zoning since, you know, some concerns around compliance and performance. And then just to clarify, the proposed height of the townhomes, they're in compliance with the existing MF14 standards. What we're really here to do is approve a tentative map because the applicant wants to sell these as basically residential townhome units rather than renting them out as apartments. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I also just kind of related to traffic, maybe this will be part of Mike's response when he, when he gets on, but I don't think a traffic study was required for this, right?
No, no.
And was that just part of the overall engineering analysis that would determine whether or not it generated enough activity?
So, so when an application is submitted, they're required to document how many peak hour trips in a, in a traffic, an entry and access study would be required at 100 peak hour trips. A full-blown traffic study would be required at 200 peak hour trips with only 17. There was no additional analysis required.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I think I'll just wait for Mike. Maybe he can opine more on some of the traffic concerns because I also live near Plumas and, and it can get really busy, especially like kind of in the early evening, late afternoon. So just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Villanueva?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The, so this kind of touches on what Commissioner Armstrong said. So if, well, first of all, I think it's a great project, but I do have a lot of questions. And I think this might make sense for the, yeah, I guess you're the best person for this. As Armstrong, as Commissioner Armstrong mentioned, had the applicant decided they wanted to rent these units, they could have rented them, but it's, it is because they want to sell them. And if they changed, if the applicant changed his or her mind, they could decide to rent them and it, this project would not be in front of us.
The distinction on the renting versus the sale is to say that if it was just proposed as a multifamily project in the, in terms of a traditional apartment building, that could have gone straight to building permit without ever having come to staff and the Planning Commission. But because it's proposed as a for-sale product via a tentative map, the tentative map is what triggers coming to the Planning Commission. So they could have proposed the same or more, or they could have proposed, you know, the same number of, of apartments, if you will, and that could have gone straight to building permit.
Okay. And then in the packet, it says, this is under traffic access and circulation. It says the proposed access does not meet the City of Reno access management standards, and the applicant will be required to provide a design exception approved by the city engineer. So what does that mean? The proposed access does not meet the City Reno access management standard? What's the issue here?
So that would be something that the applicant might be able to speak to a little bit further, but he did just talk about that. Okay, or do you want to cover that?
Gabe Whitler, Odyssey Engineering. Yeah, so there's set guidelines in, in the City of Reno Design Manual and standard details for, for access points. And that sets minimum distances for, for new development if you were trying to build new improvements or new driveways. And just given the nature of, of these type of infill projects, there's offset driveways and access points that you very rarely will meet that full standard. So what, what that condition does is it requires us to, to submit a formal technical summary and, and formal request to, to deviate from those minimum standards. I, I don't think there's this place on the parcel you could put an access point and, and meet those standards.
I see, I see. Okay. This is going to be.
Yeah, it's kind of a catch-22. If you're allowed to develop and, and you need to have access, you know, putting it in the middle is of the parcel, it's essentially the same place the current access point is, is, is the most logical.
So with the prior develop, with the prior property that was on there is because of the type of property it was at the access point, obviously was in a different location than this one would be? Or, I mean, I would imagine it would have been in a similar.
It is. It's, the driveway's in almost the exact same spot that the current or the previous access point was.
But was it because it was single-family and this would, I mean?
You know, it was, as you saw, it was kind of a complex, similar to, it had, it had buildings all the way around the access point. So, thank you.
I'm just wondering why that was, it was fine for the past development and then why it's not fine.
I think because it's so old. I'm, I'm fairly confident that when this was developed back when there either wasn't a standard to be met. I think that that's been there for, for quite some time, probably way before the design manual was established.
And then I have a question for the city planner. So what we have in front of us is a tentative map. Will we be able to see design at any point throughout the application process, the character and design of anything that's ultimately put here?
No. So as the last public commenter pointed out, that there are no elevations, and the applicant pointed out during the presentation that there are no elevations. The tentative map is not required to have elevations for the decision. That's not what you're deliberating, deliberating on effectively. The design will have to conform with current code requirements in terms of the MF14 zone and then specifically the Plumas Neighborhood Overlay that limits it to 25 feet along with a minimum roof pitch. So, and that was actually one of the things in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan document that goes back to the mid-'90s that there was, the, the, the neighborhood at the time wanted projects that came in at a higher density like this particular project to match the character of the area in terms of the, the, the look and feel of the residential, the residences, the single-family residences. So that was actually one of the reasons, or that was the reason, that they stipulated the 25-foot, two-foot, sorry, two-story, 25-feet maximum height as well as a minimum roof pitch so that you wouldn't get traditional kind of flat-roof block type apartment buildings. They wanted the apartment buildings to look like residences.
But as far as like the cottage look or the, you know, old-timey kind of aged neighborhood look, we really, it's not in our findings. We don't really get a say on.
No, but I can assure you that the building permit plan reviewers will make sure that it meets the code requirements and also the Plumas Neighborhood requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Can I jump in on that? Jeff, a question for you.
Sure.
I understand typically for articulation standards, often I understand typically for articulation standards, often they're based on like frontages. So I guess my question is, we've got a development that has essentially six buildings moving off of the street. So do the code, how does the code look at that? Because often you wouldn't have articulation standards unless it's actually facing a street. So just to the point and to the question, I appreciate the clarification on the requirements, the roof pitch and that, but it's, in another situation, you wouldn't be forced to do that as you're off the street. So is the intent, or am I misinterpreting the code where you would actually have to apply those standards regardless of the fact that they're not actually fronting Plumas Street?
So the sides facing Plumas would be the sides that have the highest level of articulation requirement.
Okay.
So even though they are effectively, and actually, if we go to, can't really see it on that one, you can kind of see it on this one. The unit to the northeast corner, that's actually a front that that unit is actually facing out on Plumas. So that's the front of that unit, but that's the only unit that faces Plumas in terms of the front of the building. The, but all, well, all, there's only two, but those frontages facing Plumas have the highest level of articulation requirement because they're street-facing.
And I understand that. I guess my question is, what's the applicability of those requirements for the unit that's in the southwest corner that doesn't have a frontage on anything and backs up to, you know, those other houses?
So, thank you for the question. I don't remember the exact articulation requirements for MF-14 or for the residential zones, but there are requirements. So at the end of the day, you're not going to get, you know, blank walls with no character.
And I'm just, I just wanted to continue that discussion, just to take that level. And I understand I'm not looking to see the elevations. I just want the assurance that the code requirements that are here apply to all six of these individual buildings and not just the two elevations that are facing Plumas Street because I think that's part of, when you look at the buildings that were there before, they were each little residential buildings that worked their way back there. So I think you get the intent of my question. I would say the applicant probably, if he could understand as well. I just want to make sure that we're applying whatever those standards are uniformly to each structure in here and not just those that have frontage on Plumas. I understand those might have to have more articulation, but there's requirements here that would be applicable for all of them.
There's a minimum level of articulation and character that would be required across all of the buildings, absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks. Just wanted to understand.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for jumping in on that.
Thank you. Discussion. So we have, Mike Michele is not available on Zoom. We're able to have him by phone, but the process for getting him by phone is a little wonky. It requires us to put him on speakerphone. And you hear that echo? Does anybody have any thoughts on whether you'd like your questions answered about traffic or if you're satisfied from what you've heard?
Commissioner Dracula? Yeah, I mean, I feel like I know his answer, to be honest. I just kind of wanted to hear what the discussion was like. It's 17 trips peak hour on both days. I mean, I don't love it, and I know that's probably what's coming down. I just wanted to hear more about the thoughts and, I mean, if anything bounces off my fellow commissioners, don't mean to shoot into discussion about, you know, that left turn in. If we still feel like we have any issues or can make any solves, but also probably the answer is it's 17 trips in the morning, 17 trips at night, and seen as negligible and, you know, may just be something we deal with in a higher-density neighborhood and that's life. But, so I'm okay with not talking to Mike through speakerphone.
And maybe we can pivot into discussion because I think my take on it is if they could build the 17 units now, they'd be apartments, it goes straight to permit.
Right.
We have no say. It's kind of an inevitability in my mind and.
Right.
So I don't know how much I weigh that, but I also think it's kind of nominal in terms of its effect.
Yeah, I really just wanted to understand, I guess, the threshold requirements again for the traffic study and just have more insight into how they actually determine what is negligible versus not. And so based on the feedback I received, I understand, and it's probably frustrating for some folks, but I mostly just wanted to make sure I understood how that decision was arrived at. And to your point, it's, if they were apartments, you wouldn't even be having the discussion. So I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It sort of borders on discussion and the question is built into it. So in my opinion, I think the traffic issues that we're experiencing on Plumas are kind of symptomatic of a broader system-wide issue in that area in terms of just, you know, there's a lot of growth happening and there's a lot of traffic just generally kind of in the region. Moving towards more infill development is a goal of the master plan, so I think this project is supportive of that overall vision and approach for the city. I guess my question is, Jeff, the staff report references some RTC proposed improvements along Plumas and the Regional Transportation Commission and the improvements that they make are intended to address some of those broader, you know, systematic issues for transportation. Can you speak to, or maybe Gabe, if you have knowledge of those, what type of improvements might be down the line or in the future for Plumas Street or this area in general that might alleviate some of the traffic concerns? And I'm thinking like multimodal transportation, things like that.
And that is specifically the word that is used in the language there as far as being multimodal. So, yeah, I mean, what that actually means at the end of the day, I don't know, but one would hope that, of course, that just in general, the direction is to have less reliance on automobiles and more availability in terms of public transit and bicycling, et cetera. So, but, Gabe, do you have anything else on that?
Did you want to just share the RTC letter?
It was, it's in the staff report.
Yeah, I believe we have that letter.
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, Mr. Chairman and Jeff, so it's my understanding that RTC is proposing those multimodal improvements along Plumas Street at some point in the future.
Right.
Minor arterial, it's always going to have kind of that traffic issue because it's a fairly primary north-south arterial in the central part of Reno and Midtown, but by providing some of the sidewalk connectivity along Plumas there on the west side to get to Mount Rose Street, potential bike lane improvements and other sidewalk improvements, those types of things, not only in this area, but system-wide could help alleviate some of the traffic concerns that we're experiencing. Is that fair?
That's the theory, right? Yeah, yeah. I hope, but yes, that's, that's, that's the proposal.
And that's part of the density increase that, that it's twofold, right? There's the land use piece, which is the density, and then there's the transportation piece, which is cars, but also pedestrian and bicycle and transit that go along with it. So if we do both of those together in areas like this, then in theory, in the future, we're moving towards that vision of, you know, a walkable, connected urban environment.
Yes, and, and, yes, fair. And as I pointed out, thankfully, the, you know, this, well, the project would be required to have a six-foot sidewalk in front of it anyway, but it is continuing the connection. As you can see, it ends right at the southeast corner of the office building, just to the north of the project site. That the sidewalk does not continue along Plumas further south. So this is just, you know, as development comes in, adding sidewalk, increasing connectivity, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had one question for Gabe. This image is helpful for this. So there's a condition that came in here that's talking about, I think from the fire department, talking about the trash enclosure in the back. We've had some issues in some recent projects where there's some increased density and some concern about, you know, the trash enclosures and the possibility, this photo's a great example of it, there's six buckets out on Plumas on there with the trash enclosure. And I'm just trying to understand, there's 17 units here, but it's not an apartment, so it's not a communal trash. Everybody would, unless, I guess that would be the question, otherwise you're going to have 17 green buckets in the back and having, I'm assuming there's the ability to pick that up on the site, or are we looking at a similar situation to this?
Yeah, Gabe Whitler, yeah, the intent is to provide a commercial-style trash enclosure with, with commercial-style bins so that it would get picked up. Instead of 17 cans out on the street or crammed in the back, they will be able to pick up recycling and standard commercial trash bins. You'd see it in the, in the hammerhead, so the waste manager will pull straight in with a commercial bin and then turn around in the hammerhead style, turn around like the fire department would and exit so that it, it keeps it off the public street. Being townhomes with all common area outside of the footprint of the buildings and aside from the yard areas that are limited common element, this would enable them to have an association to maintain and help facilitate the common-use trash.
And I think that was, that was my follow-up question is, is there, will there be a requirement that essentially part of your fees go to the fact that it's a communal trash situation or, you know, and that that would be however the agreement is, but it's not, again, not 17 separate pickups as a part of.
Correct.
This, and that would be addressed through some homeowners association.
Yep, yep. There'll be a significant set of CCNRs establishing the rules for that, that type of thing throughout the community.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. And Jeff, can you just verify, is that something that, obviously it's not a condition that we would be looking at, but is staff understanding that that's the approach and is that something that we've seen on maybe similar projects like this?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving to discussion. Commissioner Modaewo?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I think it is a good project. I, if it wasn't in the code to allow for the 17, I probably would ask that it be reduced, but I did look at the code, did double-check that, and it does provide, and they are within that, because I do think that is pushing it, but, you know, they're in compliance. And so, other than that, I think it is a good project, but I will say, I, you know, we do get a ton of, I, just like you, Commissioner Dracula, I use that street all the time. And during peak hours, it's tough, but I will say for the majority of the day, it's pretty smooth sailing and I try and avoid using a car for other portions of the day. You know, if I'm going to grab a coffee with a friend and we're usually walking or taking a bicycle, so, and I find that a lot of folks in that neighborhood do that, so I'm not terribly concerned, even though I can foresee traffic being pretty rough during peak hours. I think this is still a good project.
Yeah, I would agree. I like seeing, I like seeing the density bonus being deployed. I think we've only seen that maybe three or four times, and I was a big proponent of that when that was put into the code. It's just a good infill project that achieves a lot of the goals of the master plan. Traffic is a concern, but I don't necessarily know that what is capable of being there is any better than what is being proposed. So yeah, I'll be in support of this project. Commissioner Dracula?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
The matter of case number LDC 23-00058, 1565 Plumas Street Townhomes. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend that Planning Commission approve the tentative map subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Is there a motion, or we have a motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. And just for the record. The appeals process has that any final action not including recommendations or failures to take action by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with the fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. Great, thank you all so much. We're now going to reopen general public comment. I have a general public comment from Genesis Rojas Serrano.
Hello, my name is Genesis Rojas. I came from Hope High School. I'm bringing to with the deep concern and reading the current state of the education of the United States. As a constituents of citizens, who cares about the future or notion, I believe it's necessary to express my distinction and highlight some benefits I observed by education. So I think we have problems with the education more because I'm a student. I see how students had problems and like just, it's not a school, it's out. I'm sorry, I'm difficult with my English, so I'm trying my best. So I think it's necessary to take more opportunities and programs to keep pushing more students to be successfully, to be in their classes and have more. In conclusion, I think we have the right to be in scholarships or the, like, situations, you know, and difficult. So like me, I just have like one year here to speak in English because I come from Mexico. So I think it's more necessary to have more programs and communities, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for coming out to speak to us tonight.
Thank you.
Request a speak from Juan Medina Vasquez.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos Medina Vasquez. I'm coming from high school, and I want to start my speech with some phrase what I always see, what it say. If you fight for your dreams, maybe you can get it, but in my opinion, that is a hell of false because now in this, and we community, we are have this problem in nepotism, which is when you try your best in occasion, maybe you don't got it because someone get contacts or we have a friend or parent or somebody where they can put you in a good position. And it's included this community and the government in occasions. And then it's have, for example, with us, problems to the students because, and if I can tell you I'm a senior right now, I'm going to go to get a university and maybe the career when I want. And that is get a problem because normally when you, you think you got it, you think you are in your tug, somebody can come you and get enough just because why with someone is getting a contact with, I don't know, the parents, the, anybody where you can say, and this is, I'm not, I'm asking for this because I want to get more opportunities with the students to get if someone fight for they do want, do it. If someone get, I don't know, years and years of career, would they do a study and prepare with that position to get it because in occasion, the person would just more, would just have more experience, more time than they want, just come and anybody where they don't know anything can get you off for any reason. And then I want to get more good in that type, and then you can get more opportunities to give the opportunity with the people they need and they like literally work with that and that is can make a society to a good way. Thank you for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you for coming out to speak to us tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else in the public like to speak during general public comments? Okay, uh, anyone else in the public like to speak during general public comments? Seeing none, we'll close general public comment, move on to agenda item five point four. Case number LDC two-three dash zero-zero-zero-five-two Panda Express variants. We have a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Ford. I'm here representing Superior Electrical Advertising. We're the sign contractor for this, uh, project. Uh, we're here tonight to request two sign variances for a new integrated center at the corner of, uh, Sky Vista Parkway and Vista Knowles Parkway. Uh, this is a layout of the, of the property. Uh, we are proposing two signs. One is a freeway facing sign, uh, Z-one. The second is a, uh, on the street side, that's sign Z-two. Uh, the first variance is to allow for an increase in the size of sign Z-one facing the freeway. The ordinance allows for a two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot sign. We're proposing a five-hundred-square-foot sign. Uh, the primary reason for that is to allow drivers along the freeway enough time to safely merge and exit um, without having to pull any last-minute maneuvers or go past and get off the next exit and try and find their way back, uh, through, I think there's some residential neighborhoods. This is, uh, our rendering of the proposed sign showing overall height of seventy feet and then the dimensions. Uh, it would display four tenants. Right now, we know that Panda Express will be one. I believe a second tenant is going to be Dutch Bros. The other tenants are still to be determined. This is obviously not all the tenants that would be in the center. We're just, this is going to be designed for, for primary tenants. Um, this is a short, the shorter sign, this is sign Z-two, this is the, um, street-facing sign proposed at forty feet and, um, I think it's I don't remember what this two-hundred-and-fifty five-hundred square feet. Um, this is a layout. We, we've put, put together a, um, site visibility study showing what the signs would look like from various distances along three ninety-five, both northbound and southbound, so you have an idea, um, what it would look like and, and again, trying to provide drivers enough, you know, distance to safely merge and to get off on Lemon. And that's what these photos go through here, various sign heights, um, for the freeway-facing sign. And then, um, we've provided the, this is the, uh, street-facing sign. Again, once they get off, there's a couple of other centers. They're gonna need to go up and turn left on Sky Vista, so providing that visibility, we think is going to be important so they can find the right center um, when they get off and not be meandering through the streets there. Um, but again, we've shown this at different heights just to give you a representation of what it would look like to provide the visibility, um, that's necessary. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer her. Any questions?
Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carter, do we have a presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner for the Record. Before you tonight is a variance, um, request from specific sign standards, um, in the general, general commercial zone. Up front, um, staff is recommending denial on this application. Um, the property is located south of Sky Vista, um, east of Lemon Drive and west of Vista Knowles Parkway. Um, the site is vacant land currently in review, um, to be developed as a, a multi-building pad site. Um, the specific request is a variance to allow a second freestanding sign where one is allowed currently and, um, to increase the sign copy area from two-hundred-and-fifty square feet maximum to five hundred. And the approximate sign locations are look, are shown on the, the screen. Um, the applicant showed the, the site plan, um, to propose that the forty-square-foot sign is, is proposed off of Sky Vista, Sky Vista Parkway, um, and the, uh, seventy-foot square foot sign, or seventy, seventy-foot tall sign is located to the south of site, um, generally oriented towards US Highway three ninety-five. And this are the renderings that the applicant provided of those two signs. And then the northbound and southbound views at seventy feet on the, um, freeway. So the property is zoned general commercial. Um, general commercial generally, generally grants the greatest sign allowance of all of our zones outside of the gaming overlay district. Um, the code limits the number of signs to one per frontage to reduce visual clutter and encourage consolidation of freestanding signs um, to a single center sign per frontage. The highway is not considered a frontage. And, uh, an additional sign is granted if the site is greater than ten acre, ten acres in size. Because there is a single frontage and the site is less than ten acres, only one is allowed. Um, the sign area is allowed, um, is based on the width and speed limit of the street frontage. For parcels with the street frontage between a hundred feet and four hundred feet like, like this site, um, a hundred-and-twenty-five square feet of signage, signage is allowed, but that can be doubled if the speed limit along Sky, or on, along the street frontage is thirty-five miles per hour or greater. Um, the code already has a built-in progressive system that acknowledges as the size of a property increases, the tenants increase, the number of tenants increases. Um, and then more, more sign copy area may be needed. It also acknowledges as speed increases, sign needs, signs need to be larger to allow for safe readability. So based on the street frontage width and speed limit, the site would normally be limited to two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And this request proposes to double the allowed sign copy area and the number of signs. The property is located within a neighborhood center and a suburban corridor. Master plan policies specific to signage that the project is not in conformance with are, um, I mean, aimed to balance visibility considerations with the need to minimize impacts on surrounding views and neighborhood character and that, and that needs to be analyzed in the design of these signage plans. Um, individual developments within suburban corridors also should establish a unique identity, um, with the surrounding development context. And in the analysis of signage, um, we, we look at whether these signs are contributing to the, the, um, distinct identity of these areas. Looking at the area, there are no freestanding signs oriented toward the freeway within about one mile of the site. Um, referring to on-premise signs, there's obviously billboards, um, this, this would be the only on-premise center sign within a mile of the site. There is residentially zoned property to the southwest, um, and it's noted on the screen. There, our staff has concerns that the combination of the increased sign area and the height may have negative impacts on those residences to the southwest. Lastly, the existing signs in the area are capped out at thirty-five feet in height and already meet, I meet the maximum sign copy area. As an example, the Walmart monument sign across the street, um, is thirty-five feet tall and has a maximum sign copy area of two-hundred-and-fifteen square feet and both of these, the Smith Shopping Center and the Walmart nearby, those are larger sites with, um, and they're able to use their sign copy area efficiently. On the screen are the findings for a variance that need to be met to, uh, approve. Variances require an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition unique to the property. Um, the applicant identified that due to the curvature of the freeway approaching the site, there are time visibility concerns, um, that their customers, potential customers may not have time to exit the freeway after being notified by their signs. Um, this condition is not unique. There's a lot of examples of these kinds of issues with our freeway and there's, um, so we don't, staff doesn't feel that this can be characterized as an extraordinary or exception, exceptional condition. Uh, variances require an undue or peculiar hardship to the property owner, um, with the stripped application of code. Um, there, there are specific code requirements that limit signage visibility from the freeway specifically. There's a hundred-foot buffer where sign, sign copy area can't exceed twenty square feet within, uh, adjacent to the freeway. So we have standards in place that are policy decisions made by the city council to limit visibility of signs from the freeway. Um, the property also has somewhat of an advantage with its location directly abutting the freeway where other properties around in the, the neighborhood center may not have the same visibility. Um, this, the request for a variance also cannot be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. As proposed, staff has concerns about the increased size with its height on those residentially zoned, those residentially zoned property to the southwest. Um, and generally, we feel that it's out of character with the area. If, in the event that this commission approves the request, staff has prepared conditions to limit the height of these signs to thirty-five feet in height and, um, require a monument-style sign that is architecturally compatible with the proposed development. Lastly, um, requests for variances must be consistent with the intent of, and purpose of the Land Development Code Title eighteen. Um, because there are code requirements that lisibilit, li- limit visibility of signs from the freeway and there are built-in considerations for additional signage based on property size, speed limit and frontage. Um, this request goes against the intent and purpose of the code and to quote the purpose statement in the code, the code intends to eliminate wasteful and unsightly competition in signs and adds to the quality and they must add to the quality of life by minimizing, minimizing visual pollution. So all things considered, all findings considered, staff recommends that Planning Commission, uh, deny the variance application. And on the screen is the recommended motion. Thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We'll come back to the commission for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, received and read email correspondence and am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I read emails and I am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Valto, same disclosures. Now we'll open up public comments. I have one request form from, uh, Ms. Lori Ray.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, my name is Lori Ray. I'm here on behalf of Scenic Nevada. And we submitted a letter to you a few days ago and we hope you had a chance to read it. Um, Scenic Nevada is opposed to, uh, the variance for many of the reasons in the staff report, which was excellent, by the way. Uh, there is no hardship. There's nothing extraordinary or exceptional that warrants these signs. Um, without a variance, these signs don't comply with the code. They're twice as big, they're too tall and there's one too many. Uh, they don't comply with the master plan either. Um, a seventy-foot tall pole sign doesn't fit with the neighborhood or the aesthetics of the proposed development, according to staff. Um, the seventy-foot tall sign is unnecessary. It would be placed on, uh, the develop, um, on the development facing US three ninety-five between exit seventy-four Lemon Drive and seventy-six, uh, Sted, uh, Boulevard. The sign actually doesn't show where to exit, so it's all you have is, you know, the tenants on there. So we don't see how this helps drivers in the long run. An N dot sign, much like that one, um, we think would do better to help drivers, um, exit at the right place. It actually names the exit so that you can get there without, um, m- many lane changes or anything like that. And, and it doesn't, it does it without intruding on sign, on scenic vistas or views from the neighborhoods. Um, there are two or three N dot signs like this one on each side of US three ninety-five in use by businesses in this corridor today. Uh, imagine the sign clutter if all of these businesses on the N dot signs wanted their own seventy-foot tall signs. Also, even if drivers miss Lemon Drive, they could take the next one instead, get back on the freeway going south, go back to Lemon Drive. And there's really no need to drive through the O'Brien Middle School or residential neighborhoods to get back to the proposed development as the applicant claims. Um, there's no hardship. Um, on the forty-foot sign, there was no hardship presented as to why it has to be five feet taller than what code allows and twice as large. And as staff said, the Walmart sign meets code and, um, some people think more and bigger signs increase their profits and whether they do or not, financial considerations shouldn't be used to grant a variance. Lastly, staff suggested conditions five and six if you agree to grant the variance. The signs would be, um, monument-style and limited to the code requirement of thirty-five feet, but there would still be one too many and they would be too big at five hundred square foot each. And again, there's no har- hardship to allow that. Uh, allowing variances in circumstances like these would do away with sign codes designed to, uh, protect the quality of life in our community. So we would ask you to please deny this variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other request to speak forms?
We did receive correspondence, which was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record. There aren't any more, uh, request to speak forms. We don't have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak, but we do have three voicemails. Would you like to hear them now?
Please.
Hello, Judith Lockwood from Reno, Nevada. Uh, number LDC twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-five-two Panda Express variance. I'm very much opposed to giving the Panda Express a sign that does not conform to the sign.
Uh, Robert Goodman, seventy-nine-hundred North Virginia, number one-ninety-three, eight-nine-five-zero-six. I am in opposition to the Panda Express, uh, sign request. And I think it's, uh, it's a well-known franchise and they really don't need anything that large to let people know. They, uh, a, a small sign just like the ones we have for, you know, uh, who's doing the cleanup along the highway. That would be enough to, uh, alert people that Panda Express is in the area and then they will find it. I say again, Panda Express is a well-known franchise and, uh, they do not need anything that large to alert the public. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Susan Pitts. I'm calling regarding case number LDC twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-fifty-two, the Panda Express variance and I believe they should be turned down. I don't believe we should make a variance for their sign at this time since it goes against our, our zoning, not the zoning, the, the sign regulations. Thank you.
There's no other public comment.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, come back to the commission for questions or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I would just like to hear the applicant's, um, I guess, opinion on staff's interpretation and where you see kind of the hardship that would lead us to vote in favor of a variance for this. You could just articulate that.
Chris Chinoka, Superior Signs. Um, this is a, we look at signage as a safety concern. If the vehicle's traveling northbound on three ninety-five pass up, uh, Lemon Drive and they get off on Sted Avenue, chances are they're gonna make a right-hand turn, go through the schools, go through the neighborhoods and try to make their way around Sky Vista. And we see that as a little bit dangerous. I just checked into a hotel. I'm from Southern California, saw a news report on the news that they're adding a, uh, an additional stoplight and a crosswalk right there in front of O'Brien. So, um, that's, that's one of the hardships. Plus, with the hundred-foot setback, um, when you only have two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, cars can pass it. They're doing seventy, eighty miles an hour on the highway and they're set in off of Lemon, so they're not right on the corner. They're gonna, vehicles are gonna get off on Lemon. They're gonna have three other choices as opposed to knowing that this new center is gonna be over about six hundred yards.
Commissioner Villanueva?
I have a, a question for the applicant.
Yes.
Given the, given the, so if we don't give you a variance, um, your position is that you, that what? That the current standard is gonna, I, I'm not sure for you as an applicant, because you, you said safety was an issue. Um, but that seems to be more for consumers. What is it that you as an applicant, um, feel that the hardship is? Um, because that doesn't seem to be clear.
Due to the location of the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Yeah, I was gonna say due to the location of the property and the fact that it is on a bend. Um, I've driven that area several times, um, doing surveys and we did flaggings and everything. It's just in a spot to where you're sort of going up a hill, sort of going down a hill. And at thirty-five feet, at sixty-five feet, eighty feet, and with the limited amount of square footage, you're, you really just can't see the sign. You're just gonna be bypassing it. And so you're not gonna really know that center's there until you're past it and either you're driving through a neighborhood or you're on your way to the next stop.
And where the building is, is there gonna be like on the building, any Panda Express signage on the building?
There will be signage on the building. There will be signage on the building, but that building is located on Sky Vista.
Okay, so it's in a different, pointing in a different direction is for the traffic? Is that?
As far as the freeway traffic goes, which is why we're asking for the five hundred square feet. But as far as the sign along Sky Vista, the secondary sign that we're requesting a variance for as well, um, we're looking for cars to be able to see that from Lemon Drive so that they can know that there's a shopping center there and not just stop at the Smith's or the surrounding fast food restaurants that are right along Lemon Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Chris Chinoka, Superior Signs.
Um, seeing no questions, we'll move into discussion. Uh, I'll start us. I, uh, don't think this pro, this project comply or meets any of the elements for a variance request. I don't think there's any exceptional or extraordinary circumstance because I don't think it's particularized, particularized to the owner. The explanation by the applicant is generalized in nature and would apply to all freeway signage. I don't want to set a precedent that allows for a variance signage in all instances in the freeway. I don't think there's an undue hardship to the owner of the property due to a strict application of the rule because I think it applies equally to all potential companies that are on the sides of the road. And I see that this could be detrimental to public health. Uh, if Commissioner Marshall were still here, he would explain this much more eloquently. Um, but I think this is an instance where there would be some visual pollution potentially, which could be detrimental to public health. Um, so for that reason, those reasons, I'd be against, uh, the proposal and an agreement with, uh, the very good staff report that was provided to us.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that and I'd be prepared to make a motion to that effect.
Please do.
Okay, in apologies. Case number L D C two three dash zero 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 five two Panda Express variance based upon non-compliance with the applicable findings, I move to deny the variance. Um, I can't meet the findings.
Motion, do we have a second?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The project is denied. I'll read it into the record, though, the appeal process. Uh, any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor or a city council member or any person who was aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with the fees, must be filed with the city clerk within ten business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. That appeal process can also be found at the bottom of the, on the second page of the agenda uh, that was posted, uh, in case you're interested in in appealing. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We'll now move on to agenda item number six, which is the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you only have a few of these left or potentially you're here till perpetuity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there was a meeting at the end of, uh, the month of May. Uh, a few items on the agenda. I think the, the two biggest items, there was a, um, sort of a workshop for, uh, the natural resources planning that, uh, T M R P A is working through, which I think was quite interesting. There were representatives there, uh, not only from, um, the T M R P A, but representatives from, um, Tom Law and some other water resources that were helped there to sort of talk about what some of the priorities would be. Uh, the one item that I did want to bring up, there's continuing discussion about potential modifications for, um, project of regional significance review of charter schools. Uh, that was pulled from the agenda and there is a P R S, Project Regional Significance, um, subcommittee meeting, actually on Monday, with representatives from the various charter schools uh, to further discuss the, um, thoughts that regional has about the, um, need for a review of charter schools above and beyond. Um, it, with an occupancy of five hundred was what the original one was and there's gonna be some additional discussion about that. Um, to be brought back to the broad, broader body. Um, so that one was, again, tabled, but we'll be coming back for additional discussion. And essentially, it's just looking at the fact that charter schools are not part of Washoe County School District's master plan. So there's no overall review of them with respect to broader regional impact. And so some concern was raised, uh, about, um, is there a way to look at it at the regional level? Um, and the discussion is what, where would that be because it's, you know, kind of, how does that fit in and when would it fit in? Um, and and what would trigger it? Because it's a sort of a unique situation that doesn't meet all of the other thresholds for regional significance, but does have a regional impact because it's not a neighborhood school. It draws from, um, you know, typically, they would draw from a much wider area and really looking at some traffic impacts, especially in proximity to either other schools or other areas where that can be a problem. So should be a robust discussion on, uh, Monday afternoon, uh, with the representatives there, so that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, we'll now move on to agenda number seven, staff announcements. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nathan Gober, Principal Planner. Uh, just jumping to item seven three, um, some follow-up from directions from the planning commission at last meeting. Uh, the planning commission will be receiving a memo from staff next week uh, regarding, um, clarification on requirements for, uh, road repair uh, during construction and temporary construction impacts as a follow-up from that inquiry as as well, um, as, uh, legislative updates from the Nevada A P A chapter, uh, for legislative action that has occurred regarding land use issues. We'll have that available for the planning commission next week.
Great, thank you.
Uh, item seven four, just the, uh, May twenty-fourth, the, uh, city council did approve, upheld the, the planning commission's recommendation and approved the, uh, Shepherd of the Mountain zoning map amendment to a public facility. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, agenda number eight, any suggestions for future agenda items? Agenda number nine, public comments. We'll open up public comment for the sixth time tonight. Are there any requests to speak forms?
We did not receive any correspondence, voicemails, or requests to speak forms, and we don't have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak.
Perfect. Seeing no one in the audience, we'll close public comments. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a nice night.